Roll call with the trustees. I'll start off with trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown, do we have trustee Brown in here yet?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Handy. I'll go to trustee Gonzales, you win.
I'm right here.
Thank you.
Trustee Weinstein. Do we have trustee Weinstein in here yet? Okay, I'll give her a couple of minutes. I'll move to trustee Napalia Bella Reese.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla. Trustee Bonilla.
Sorry, I'm here.
And do we have trustee Handy in here? Trustee Weinstein. Okay, we'll just, we'll give him a couple of minutes, but board president, we do have a quorum.
Let's see. Madam Clerk, can you check your I'm sorry, just give me a second.
Sure.
Can you check your chat? I think there's a specific question in here for you. While trustee, while, I'm sorry, while madam clerk is checking into a couple of things, welcome to our open session meeting for June 9th, 2020 at the regular meeting of the Peralta Board of Trustees. We'll go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance and I will ask Ms. Angelica Garcia to lead us in that. Maybe I will ask President Tim Karas to lead us in that.
All righty, here we go. There's a big flag, let's go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic which stands one nation of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for that, President Karas. We will now move to item 2.4 and okay. Let me tell you, all of this technology is just a bit too much sometimes. We have madam, madam vice president, do we have any report outs from actions taken in closed session?
Madam President, I am still awaiting information from our board clerk.
Thank you. We will come back to that item when we're ready. Right now, I'll move us to item 2.5, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
It moved.
A second?
Second.
And it's been second and roll call, please.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow. Thank you. Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzales, you win.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Napalia Bella Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. And trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, on item 2.6 and 2.7, we have an approval we have a approval for minutes of May twenty sixth and May twenty ninth. I want to make sure I'm reading that correctly.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and take both item two point six and two point seven together. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Trustee Napalia Bella Reese.
Yes.
And trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Fantastic. We'll move to my favorite part of the meeting, item two point eight, Associated Student Government Report.
Madam President, I hate to disappoint you, but there are no student government reports.
I thought you were going to say that to me.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. It's, it's summertime. We'll move to Peralta Classified Senate Report.
We have one speaker, Terrence Fisher. He might have left. I don't see him on the screen here. Actually, I do here. Hold on, let's see. I think this is him here.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Hi, yes.
Okay. Good evening, President Bonia, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Stroud, presidents and guests. This evening, we have one classified senate campus report. The report is from the College of Alameda Classified Senate. The College of Alameda Classified Senate would like another town hall meeting with the chancellor. A classified member mentioned that the last one was announced a little late into the event. It would be nice to hear from the chancellor so we know what her vision is during her tenure here. Amidst Peralta's financial issues, which were amplified by recent budget cuts. If positions are cut, Peralta should halt any new hiring. It doesn't make sense to hire people and cut others later. That's the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. We'll move to two point ten, the District Academic Senate Report.
Madam President, I don't believe we have an academic senate report this evening.
Thank you for that. We will then move to item two point eleven, Public Communication. Madam Vice President.
Yes, we have eight speakers. Our first couple of speakers are Kimberly King, Reina Fakaji.
Hello, let's see. Where'd you guys go? Oh, they are. I have too many windows open. Okay, so hi, everyone. You can't see me, huh?
Yes, we can. Do you?
All right, luckily I don't look too bad. Okay, thank you all. Hi, I'm Kimberly King. I am a faculty at Laney College. And I just want to thank you all for allowing, allowing the public to speak and, you know, listening to us. I'm here to talk about a petition that a group of faculty, staff and students have started relating to the movement going out in the streets and really about what can we do for our students concretely. The petition is called No Sheriffs at Peralta Colleges: Real Educational Opportunities Now. And I would like to share it with you. I wonder if I could put it in the chat. Would that be weird? I don't know. I don't know how it would read in there. Give it a try. Oops, do I have a chat? Yes, I do. Oh, it won't go in there. Okay, I'll, I'll send it to you by email. So this petition is to Chancellor Stroud and the Board of Trustees. This petition demands immediate action be taken to demonstrate that the Peralta College District is an anti-racist, pro-social justice institution. Black, brown youth are under attack. We, the undersigned Peralta faculty, students, staff and community, reject talk and diversity training as the only responses to the racist and economic violence that infects our country. The Minneapolis Police Department recently participated in extensive anti-bias training and it did not prevent the murder of George Floyd. We urge you to create real opportunities for black and brown students to thrive academically and be safe. Peralta District should stop paying sheriffs to police our students and should mobilize the Peralta community to push the governor and state legislature to do their jobs and provide the necessary funding to show that black lives matter and black minds matter. We do not accept the bipartisan consensus of austerity. The wealth is available in California to fully fund educational opportunities for our students and what is lacking is the political will and we can help with that. We, the undersigned, urge, as we mentioned, you to terminate the four point one million dollar contract with the sheriff and to invest in black and brown students now. We, we urge you to implement community-minded safety measures. There was a great town hall that was held at Laney College not too long ago and that was really discussed, different approaches, a variety of approaches to safety. We urge you to mobilize the Peralta community, to tell the governor and legislature that there should be no education budget cuts, provide the funding to make black minds matter. And we want you to prioritize this funding to ensure student safety and real opportunities that make black minds matter. The opportunities we're asking for are provide student with sufficient health resources, guarantee student housing, feed all hungry students, end the digital divide, provide enough classes that meet the requirements so students can graduate in two years rather than six or seven if they want to. Hire more part-time faculty as full-timers, especially black and brown faculty who are committed to anti-racist teaching and organizing. Hire more tutors, improve enrollment procedures that cause unnecessary early class cuts, including updating Peralta's antiquated online enrollment system. Hire more classified professionals to support understaffed departments and build on and ensure that industry and academic pipelines prioritize hiring and admitting black and brown students. We urge you to use this moment to make a difference now. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Kimberly. Reina Fakaji and Jonathan Kocher. Reina.
Evening, everyone. My name is Reina. I'm a concerned Alameda County resident and former Peralta Community College student. The Peralta Community Colleges Board of Trustees has proposed investing in a community-based security services provider. While I commend this turn towards restorative justice and de-escalation resources, I call into question why this plan does not include defunding Peralta Colleges' contracts with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. Law enforcement in the U.S. was built to protect white wealth and surveil and control black and indigenous lives. The police have never ceased to enforce the interests of white capitalist America. In specific reference to the Alameda County Sheriff's Department, I cite the Ella Baker Center for Human Rights website when I state that Alameda County Sheriff Greg Ahern, who is also the county coroner, has few restrictions and little oversight to his power. From two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen, the average Peralta Community College student body was composed of twenty-four percent black, twenty-one percent Asian, nineteen percent white and fourteen percent Latinx students, meaning the majority of students at Peralta Community Colleges are brown and black. Why then are we contracting the Alameda County Sheriff's Department, which has a history of collaboration with racist organizations like ICE? As an educator myself, I am trained to understand that students must feel safe and secure before they can take on learning. Learning cannot happen under intimidation. Today, I urge the Board of Trustees to end the contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department so that it may earnestly take action towards anti-racism and action to support the safety of its students. Thank you for your consideration. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Reina. Can we have Jonathan Kocher, Barack Lake and Benjamin Holm up to the podium of sorts?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Kocher. I'm a city employee and a member of IFPTE Local Twenty One. I'm speaking to you tonight because of my concerns about the contract between Alameda County Sheriff's Department and Peralta Community College. Thank you for taking, for giving the community space to voice their concerns around this issue. Our schools and communities are overpoliced by institutions that have a history of police brutality. Given the recent national waking on police brutality, it's time that we listen to the calls to rein in these institutions that support a system of white supremacy. Please do not continue your contract with Alameda County Sheriff's Department and suspend funding of them entirely as soon as possible. Thank you for your time and I'll yield my remaining time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Barack, Benjamin.
Hello, am I off mute? Sorry. I'm still not super good at Zoom. My name is Barack Lake. I'm a concerned Alameda resident and I'm pretty new to making public comments and I wrote a series of questions and I don't think, after hearing other people speak, that that's exactly what this space is supposed to do. I'll read the statement I wrote first. My name is Barack Lake and I'm attending this meeting in support of the end of your contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. First, I'd like to thank you for holding this public meeting and for considering a request to switch your security contract to a community-based model. What are your concrete plans regarding a change in your security vendor? Who are the providers you're considering for this role? Do you yet have a timeline in place for this transition? The statement that I wrote was short and after hearing other people speak, I wish I had made a longer one. I'd like to echo everything that Reina put so well. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Barack. Benjamin Holm, Tony Calabrese Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Holm and
I believe we just lost Benjamin.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start over. Good evening and thank you for opening your doors to democracy. My name is Benjamin Holm and I'm here to congratulate you in part on your plan to transition the Peralta Colleges to a community-based security services provider and also to urge you as part of that plan to end your contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department as soon as you can. None of us can continue to ignore the truth that the police more often harass and traumatize than protect and serve. Therefore, all of us must use the power that we have to end the police occupation of our communities and fund an alternative that truly serves their well-being. Again, I support your plan to transition away from traditional campus policing and towards a more holistic model aimed at community health. But if you're really serious about community-based security, why would you continue to invest in a repressive mode of policing? Imagine the potential of a fully funded, community-based model. Why undercut that potential by overfunding the Sheriff's Department? As the Board of Trustees for the Peralta Colleges, you have significant power to defund and dismiss the police from our learning spaces. I urge you to use that power. Do your part to dismantle the American police state. Do not allow the police to continue to terrorize the students in your care. As part of your plan to transition to a community-based security service, end your contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Tony Calabrese Thomas, Alicia Raya and Aina Ray.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Peralta College Board of Trustees. My name is Tony Calabrese Thomas. I'm from Oakland and I'm speaking to you as a white community member who is concerned for the safety of their fellow community members, especially their black and brown community members, given the presence of the Alameda County Sheriff's Department and Oakland Police Department. First, I would like to thank you for finally listening to your calling of representing your students and constituents' interests to the best of your ability. In light of recent events, I'm sure we're all looking for ways that we can change the systems currently in place which allow sheriff and police departments the power of deciding whether or not someone deserves to live or die. That is not justice. Only a couple of days ago in Oakland, the California Highway Patrol cop shot more than forty rounds at Eric Salgado and his pregnant girlfriend while he sat in a car, killing Eric. He was twenty-three years old. We know Sheriff Ahern is a white supremacist and we can no longer ignore the injustices at play and the Sheriff's Department deserves no more chances for reform. Enough is enough. In order to show real solidarity with your black and brown students and black and brown members of the Bay Area community, Peralta Community College must cut their contracts with the Sheriff's Department. As part of your plan to transition to a community-based security services provider, we are asking that you do not continue continue your contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department and suspend your funding of them entirely as soon as possible. Yield the remainder of my time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Alicia Raya and Aina Ray.
Hello, this is Alicia Raya. Okay, so my name is Alicia Raya. On behalf of Laney College ASLC and executive council members, we are standing in solidarity with our community of staff members and students demanding that you all take immediate action to demonstrate our district is anti-racist and it truly approach social justice institution. These actions and prescribed alternative systems have been laid out to you quite beautifully for you to read and follow in the, in the largely supported petition, so I shouldn't take up too much time reiterating them for you now. Black people are under attack in this country and it's time you do what's in your power to truly keep our beloved black students and communities safe from the failed and discriminatory police system. I urge you to create real opportunities for black and brown students to thrive academically and be safe. The Peralta District should stop paying Alameda County Sheriff's to police our students and instead invest those dollars into necessary programs, technological resources, teachers and nurses that students need during the era of COVID nineteen as it moves into our fall semester. You should mobilize the Peralta community to push the governor and state legislator to do the jobs and provide the necessary education funding to show that black lives matter and black minds matter in Peralta. We do not accept the bipartisan consensus of austerity. The wealth is available in California to fully fund educational opportunities and tax those who can afford it. What is lacking is a political will. And I say to you again, on behalf of the Laney College ASLC, we are empowered, we are fed up and we are energized and we will work hard to make sure you guys gain the political will to provide adequate education to our students and defund the racist and corrupt police force out of Peralta Colleges. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. And our last speaker for the evening is Aina Ray.
Hi, thank you for your time. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I first want to thank the district and the chancellor for all you're doing to weather this storm with the resources we have. I teach at Berkeley City College. My students have been struggling with the digital divide. They've been struggling economically, mentally and physically during this time and I know we all are in the, all of us in the Peralta community are doing their best as we can to serve them. But in light of the current crisis with the racial injustices going on on the streets, economically even medically with the disproportionate amount of black and brown brothers and sisters suffering from COVID nineteen, I thought, I was thinking of our Peralta community and my students who've been affected by racial bias and profiling on campus, an issue that happened before Chancellor Stroud was here, just to give it more context to everybody who's listening or watching. And then there was the mess of ending the contract last year and then they renewed it for another year and it's up for renewal, I guess, or termination on June nineteenth. So I want to talk about this. I want to talk about this, speak my truth as a member of this community and as a mother. Last summer at the board, at one of the board meetings, I'm a union member too, I'm a BCC rep at the union and I was there for union stuff. When I heard somebody talking from the Sheriff's Department introducing new deputies, they had come from Santa Rita Prison to come work at our school. My jaw dropped and I was really surprised and I thought, am I naive to think that this is not My jaw dropped and I was really surprised and I thought, am I naive to think that this is not normal? After all the pain that the police service has caused our students and we now and and the disproportionate amount of black and brown men and women in prison due to the racist system and the school-to-prison pipeline in our country? And then we have a police service, former deputies from Santa Rita Prison policing our students? That just does not sit well with me. And so I had to come here today to say something to you, especially after what everything, I didn't say anything before last last summer and I should have. Now I'm saying something. How can we decide? But we need to decide, how can we use this four point one million dollars? How can we better spend it to keep our community safe? For me, we need to do an overhaul and it sounds like a lot of other people agree. We need to redirect the funds to implement community-minded campus safety measures by developing transparent guidelines and processes that include students, staff, and faculty input in shaping a culture of public safety. This idea is not foreign. There are many people in this community who believe in it. And as a taxpayer and mother in Oakland, I would like to see this change. We need to take at least a couple million, at least of that contract and give it back directly to our students. We need, our students need immediate mental health services. We need to provide sufficient free health resources, including culturally informed healing, programs that offer relief from traumas related to law enforcement and the justice system, resources for black trans students, and more black and brown mental health counselors. Currently, we have a long waitlist of counselors at our school. Our kids, our students, adults and young adults and older adults need food. I had a student who was literally starving, okay? I have two students who've lost family members to this. Okay? And then aside from that, you expect them to go to class and log on online? They need free Wi-Fi to end this digital divide. All these issues could be addressed if we let the AC Sheriff's Department go and we build a new way to be safe and healthy while receiving quality education for our children, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Aina. Madam President, that is the end of our public comments.
Thank you for that. We will move into, and thank you for all of the speakers who um came and shared um their concerns with us this evening. Um, we'll move into the Chancellor's report. Chancellor?
Thank you, trustee Bunea. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Bunea and members of the board, my colleagues that typically sit on the dais with me and members of the public. Um, it's my pleasure to give you this report today. I want to start it off with uh giving some kudos and acknowledgement to uh Mark Johnson and Angel Hunter and their team in the Marketing Communications and Public Relations Department. Um, Angel produced a, with the team support, produced a video on the College of Alameda's Fab Lab and that video got picked up with news um on the news and uh got picked up in the um the uh Inside Higher Ed um edition. So there was not only just, it not only was Inside Higher Ed edition, it was also on uh television news. And I, if you'll um allow me, I'd just like to play this um video and I don't want to necessarily steal the thunder, but I also know that this video has been, and Angel's work has been nominated for an award uh with CC Pro, which is a statewide organization uh for uh community college public relations officers. Uh, and we are not sure uh whether this is one that's chosen or not, but we we strongly believe it's a contender and that it will be, we'll be getting good news about that. But if I can just uh beg your indulgence and share this video, I'd appreciate it. Uh, I am going to see if, uh, I'm sharing my screen. Let's see. I am going to see if I can play this video.
Chancellor, there is no video showing.
Gotta love technology. The closed captioning is working though. It is. I've actually seen the video, so sorry for everyone else if you haven't. Maybe we can provide a link for everyone. Was it in the um article?
So I'm seeing, I'm understanding that, oops, 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 wait, let me stop sharing that. I'm understanding that you couldn't hear the audio and no matter what I did, it didn't let you hear it based on the text that I was getting. Um, if you, on the actual item, um, there uh is a link that you can click on it and look at it, and I'm sorry that you couldn't hear the audio of that. It's a really powerful video. Um, so uh with that, let me just go on and uh share with, share some other things uh with you uh with this report. Um, so uh again, first, kudos to uh Angel Hunter and to uh Mark and his team for a job, for a beautiful uh video that really highlights the significance of the work that's being done at the colleges. I know at, you know, both Laney's Fab Lab and the College of Alameda's Fab Lab. Uh, so really kudos um and congratulations to you all for producing such a magnificent video. And many thanks to the college, the faculty and staff uh who are doing that great work. The second thing that I want to uh do is just simply acknowledge, uh as I did in my message, uh, the, to acknowledge the collective and individual pain, anguish, horror, grief that surrounded the murder of Mr. George Floyd. And um to say that uh it's been really as some of the speakers have talked about the struggles that the students go through, this too adds to uh some of their anguish. And in many ways, the students and the community have tried to uh to speak out and to express their their concerns and to express, you know, their grief around uh the state. Um, there are so many people have been brutalized for you know, walking, driving, bird watching, eating, drinking coffee, renting an Airbnb, using a coupon, cutting grass, going to work, leaving work, um walking home with Skittles, uh selling water, selling lemonade, playing golf, working, working late, sleeping in the bed, playing videos, games, playing on the playground, swimming in a pool, uh and so on. Uh, and many people not only are witnessing it, but also experiencing it. There's just about not a black and brown household that you can um address that they uh don't share their stories or similar um experiences. Uh, so it's just uh fundamentally inconceivable um the kind of pain and anguish that uh I want to acknowledge that our students and our community um experience. And so we as an institution, we as individuals, we as professionals across the district and uh within the state have attempted to uh speak to these issues. I had the opportunity uh to work with the executive staff to put out an executive statement that all of you have seen. Additionally, I put out a statement from the chancellor and I really appreciate the speakers that have said, yeah, we have to do something. We have to not just talk about it, but we have to do something. And in each of those statements, uh there's a list of different things that, you know, we propose that we as individuals uh can do. I also participated in a statewide webinar that the chancellor's office, Chancellor Oakley's office uh featured and uh in doing so, uh had the opportunity to distribute uh suggestions as well. Those, uh that statement that I made at the webinar and the suggestions, the very concrete suggestions, um got distributed by the chancellor's office to the entire state as well. Um, and then we also hosted a forum here in this district, which was on uh racial literacy and critical consciousness and we had more than um, I want to say two hundred and twenty-five people attend. Yeah, two hundred and twenty-five people attend uh this ninety-minute forum. Um, more than two hundred and twenty-five people attended the ninety-minute forum and um that included uh people on Zoom and YouTube, looking at YouTube postings, and it included um the faculty, administration, staff. Um, is, is, is something playing in the, in the background? Are you all hearing a um? Are you all hearing a, a plan of the video?
No, only your, your spoken words, Chancellor.
Yeah, just you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, and then uh I would like to go on um to say, I would like to go on to say that, you know, uh as the birthplace of the Black Panther Party, uh Peralta Community College District remains at the forefront of this struggle. And um the, uh, on June the fifth, the Oakland chapter of the NAACP organized a political action, organized a political action uh activity and none other than our um trustee Meredith Brown spoke, as well as Dr. David Johnson spoke to the community, uh giving uh important statements that are underscoring the importance of um keeping in mind that despite our collective outrage, we have to bear in mind that this moment is about humanity and morality. And the interesting thing about this event is that it was picked up and livestreamed on MSNBC. So um with that, I'm sharing the news, activities, uh efforts of the Peralta Community College District, the celebrations uh as well as uh the struggles that the district has gone through uh on this and the commitment that we will continue. And even subsequent to, even since then, we got news that a former student who was the, a former uh College of Alameda student who was the college uh student body president was arrested uh in a very disturbing video, arrested by the Alameda uh Police Department for uh quote-unquote dancing in the street as he does this routine. Uh, he's a martial artist and does this exercise routine. Uh, and there is a very disturbing video. Uh, and many of the faculty, staff, and students have spoken out about it. Uh, it's my intention to um connect with the mayor um of the, of Alameda in order to express a concern and support for the former student and uh um express uh concern about uh the criminalized behavior of simply exercising uh in the street. Um, and so with that, uh I'd like to uh turn over the report to the colleges. But before I do, I just want to take one point of personal privilege and ask you all to join me in um congratulating uh Dr. Tim Karas as uh as we speak, uh within the very next day, his name is being forwarded to the Board of Trustees for Mendocino uh College to be the president there. Um, I, I did offer my firstborn, but uh Tim wasn't buying it because, of course, he's thirty-five now, so he's not as cute as he used to be, but uh Tim is going to, uh with a successful vote tomorrow, is going to be transitioning to be the president at Mendocino College. And I'd like to extend my deep appreciation to him uh for working with us and being a part of this team and congratulations to him on um being able to uh pursue the next chapter uh of his professional journey. And with that, I'll turn it over to the college presidents for their report and why don't we start with Dr. Karas?
All right, very much, Chancellor. Um, yeah, tomorrow will be a very interesting day, um potentially. Um, um, so I'm just so blessed to um be part of Peralta and College of Alameda. I, the island is just fantastic, so I really appreciate it. I might have more eloquent words um later. It's just overwhelming to be um transitioning to superintendent president of um Mendocino College, um but it'll be good, I think. Uh, so I don't want to take up time about myself, um, because that's not what I do. And I wish I could have lots of, usually president's reports are really great, like we always talk about really, really happy things like the PPE video that just happened, which is fantastic. I just want to give a little bit of time because I really appreciate the chancellor mentioning um the report that came out on the news over the weekend um about um one of our students um who was detained and arrested in Alameda on May twenty-third. Uh, Mr. Watkins um was dancing in the street, so if you see the video, I'm just, it is disturbing. Uh, Mr. Watkins um was a student at COA in two thousand and ten. He was our valedictorian and he was the um president of our associated student body. He was an EOPS student. And so he is still a member of the COA family. And I think that is first and foremost, and we support him. We reached out, um, of course, being an EOPNS student, his EOPNS counselors have, I think, already um mobilized uh how they do because they already mobilized how they do because they support their students so well. And we've contacted him to say we support him and we love him. And so I just really wanted to share that and just how thankful I am to have had to work with many of you over the past six years at Peralta in both my roles as president and as vice president of instruction at COA. And COA is a gem and it has a great new building coming. So thank you very much. And hopefully invite me to the groundbreaking, please. Okay? Great, thanks.
All right, thank you, Dr. Karas. And let's go to Dr. Angelica Garcia with Berkeley City College.
Good evening. Buenas, buenas noches. You, members of the, of the board and the community, my fellow colleagues, you certainly have the report for Berkeley City College. But I want to take a moment to highlight a little bit more in the work to respond to the community regarding what is necessary right now for supporting students, the community, faculty, classified professionals and administrators, and really its connection to the racial justice work that's necessary during this time. In the board report, I did share the letter to the campus community and really am moved and inspired by the researcher scholar, Dr. Ibram Kendi, who wrote the text, How to Be an Anti-Racist, and also first wrote Stand From the Beginning. The clarity with which Dr. Kendi basically shares that one can be, in essence, a nice person or a kind person, but still engage in promoting racist policies and practices is, is an interesting space. And it's one that as our educational institutions, we must address head on. So some, some actions that you will be seeing coming from Berkeley City College are that we are pulling together a college task force that's going to focus on measurable outcomes. And more specifically, I want to share some data because one of the components around engaging in action means acting towards a something and achieving a something. And when it comes to matters of student equity, African-American students at Berkeley City College comprise 16% of our total population, yet they historically are still at some of the lower completion rates. That is not a student problem. That is a college and an institutional problem to address. And we must do our work to identify those points in which our practices, our processes are contributing to that. Likewise, 26% of our student population identifies Latinx. And though they represent the largest body within Berkeley City College, they still do not complete at rates as they're white and Asian-American students. Again, that's not a student issue or a problem. That's an institution. What is it about us that we need to work on? So I look forward to sharing as this next academic year rolls out, the work of this task force, the focus on student equity data, completion rates, closing those equity gaps. And another action item, which this is actually an invitation to the board, in case you are not feeling like you have enough to read, the Berkeley City College leadership team is engaging in a reading reflection and response series. And we're beginning with the book, How to Be an Anti-Racist by Dr. Ibram Kendi. Then we will move forward with the book, White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo, who is a critical scholar and researcher on whiteness and how to engage this work with white allies and colleagues. And, and then close with Ta-Nehisi Coates, Between the Worlds and Me. So it's an, it's an open invitation actually to any of the colleagues on this call. It's, the leadership team is taking it on, but it's an open invitation to faculty, classified professionals who want to engage with the, the work in earnest, that we need to do the work individually, that we must, that we must operate from that frame. So I share that because the, the events of the last week have, have taken me through moments of just sheer rage and outrage. And certainly as someone who identifies as a woman of color, a queer woman of color, there are a lot of discriminations and aggressions towards a variety of communities. But it is clear to me that right now, we, we must center blackness. We must be and support the anti-racist, anti-sexist movements. And so I'm, I'm excited and I'm hopeful that the Berkeley City College community will do our part to support this district in achieving the goal of supporting community and students. And lastly, I'll just share with you that a very good colleague of mine was a co-author of an open letter to Sesame Street. I don't know if anyone has small children or grandchildren, but Sesame Street held a town hall that was for young children. And though it was beautiful and created a space, the open letter by these women of color with small children basically call out that it's, it's not enough to code that we be nice to one another. It's not about kindness and it's not about niceness. It is about intentional, active dismantling of, of policies and processes that aim to harm people. So I have two young children. We have been in these conversations for the better part of the last week and engaging with the campus community. I am hopeful with the, the level of healing and sharing that our campus community has come together. And, and lastly, the, every Friday, we've been, we started last week with World Central Kitchen. We have another food dispersment happening this Friday. And since then, we've realized that some of our students are presenting with a lot of pain. And so just the sheer being able to see a friendly face in the community, we, we received some notes from students that they were hopeful and grateful for that. So welcome anyone who wants to join us at Berkeley City College at 11:30 a.m. on Fridays. And with that, that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Garcia. Let me go to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, presidents, faculty, staff, students and viewing public. I'm pleased to share this Board of Trustees report with you. Start with some good news. Merritt College recently applied for and was awarded monies from the First Response Healthcare Student Support Fund. With this fund, it enables Merritt College, in partnership with the Peralta College Foundation, to provide critical support funds and the amount between $300 to $500 to students who meet the following two criteria. Number one, they needed to be enrolled in our nursing program in spring 2020. And number two, they needed to demonstrate financial hardship either through the loss of primary income because of COVID-19 or have a pre-existing low income status as indicated by being eligible for a promise grant or a Pell Grant. And specifically, these funds, we're very excited that these funds are going to ensure that our nursing students can stay enrolled and complete their college programs, and at the same time help address the state's larger pressing need to transition qualified healthcare folks back into the healthcare system, given the pandemic that we're still, that we are still experiencing. And I know there's a lot of things going on, but we don't, we can't lose sight that, you know, this is still a thing. I'd also like to talk about, after much conversation, much like President Garcia, we finally had our first grab and go on, on May 28th, our first grab and go up in East Oakland, where we passed out meals, supplies, clothing and information to community members. It kind of seemed like we're getting the hang of it because we've done it every Tuesday and Thursday. I'd like to thank trustee Handy came out and was very, very excited to have her. And she was very energetic and passing out meals and going even within the neighboring businesses and making sure that we support her. I encourage all Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10 to 12, right across from Eastmont Mall, if you want to continue to be part of that. I want to also express my gratitude for being able, for having the space to do what the other presidents have done, what the chancellor has done. I've seen academic senators do it and others in terms of putting a statement out with regard to, in response to the George, the murder of George Floyd. I think that's been very constructive so far. We had the opportunity last week to have a forum, a district-wide forum, that I think was, kind of provided the seed bed for some other things. So I just want to express my appreciation for being able to do that. I also, as a chancellor, had the opportunity to participate in the lifting up Black Lives Rally this past Friday that was sponsored by the NAACP. A lot of faith-based leaders and community leaders participated in that. I want to thank trustee Brown and chancellor, and the chancellor for giving me the platform to speak at that event and for just the district's leadership in general during this historically significant point in time. I do want to let you know at Merritt College, we're putting together a forum in the upcoming days, tentatively titled, Black and Blue Conversations on Race, Education and Policing. And it's really a space to create a dialogue between, with the community, with black law enforcement officers about systemic issues and next steps. One of the things that's unique to Merritt is this juxtaposition, being the home of the Panthers and having a long history of social activism, but we also have an administration of justice program where we have several African-American instructors who have had long careers, extinguishing careers in, in, in law enforcement. So I think it just creates a very interesting space to have some of these difficult conversations. So please be looking out for that. And that concludes my report for Merritt College. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And if I can last go to Dr. Gilkerson with Laney College.
Thank you, Chancellor Shroud, and good evening, Board of Trustees, my colleagues and the Peralta Community College District community, as well as community members who are joining us tonight. I really, something that Dr. Garcia said tonight really actually resonates with me quite a bit, much of what she said resonates with me. But I want to say something about the work in earnest. And I do really believe that tonight, my report is a reflection of the work in earnest that Laney College has been doing for decades to support our communities and to uplift and uphold that Black Lives Matter. And in many ways, what I'm going to share tonight is a little video that actually just came out. And so I think it will be of particular interest to many of our trustees because you've had interest in this. So I know trustee Brown and trustee Weinstein in particular. But tonight I'm going to be highlighting the work of the Restoring Our Communities Program and the Clean Slate Program from Alameda County Public Defender's Office. And so I will share right now and believe that this is the antidote and much of the work is the answer to what's happening now. So let me cue it up.
You know, I applied for a place to live, you know, on my own. I turned in all my documents and the manager was like, you know, we do a background check at the end when I, after I do the tour and I'm walking out the door, like, I'll be back tomorrow. And she said that and I'm just like, oh, it's all good. But then, you know, I'm walking out and I'm like, oh.
When I got out, all I had was the clothes on my back that didn't fit. Like, I, I feel capable of doing anything, right? But like, it doesn't, I feel like the world is going to block me from it, right? Because like, I'm just one of many people with a criminal record.
A criminal conviction, a jail sentence, even after somebody's probation is over or charges are dismissed, can have a profound impact on people's lives in terms of their ability to get housing, their ability to get jobs, or to seek other educational or certifications.
Clean Slate is where you can come to our office, they look at your past, at your record, at your prior convictions and run-ins with the law, and they let you know which convictions, if they're felonies, if they're eligible to be reduced to misdemeanors, and if misdemeanors can be dismissed.
We have seen that helping folks to get convictions dismissed, to terminate probation and to better understand their rights around occupational licensing and criminal background checks, not only gives them confidence to apply for jobs, but also has helped them secure employment and occupational licenses, which helps them achieve self-sufficiency, helps their families and helps our community.
While I was in jail, we had this saying called public pretenders, which we refer to the public defender's, mainly because it never seemed like they actually cared, like we were just a number on the caseload. Going through this clean slate process and actually sitting down with a pub, someone from the public, public defender's office, it was great just knowing that somebody actually cared. Like, it changed my perception of the public defender's office.
I got the sense that they, the people who I was dealing with cared, you know what I mean? So that, that was a good look and it, it was free.
With the Clean Slate, it was very scary at first for me because I wasn't really used to telling anybody my personal information. It was kind of like going into a past that I really didn't want to talk about or bring up.
In the process of doing Clean Slate, I met with a lawyer once. I spoke with a lawyer a few times over the phone, but in all reality, my actual contact with the process was minimal beyond, you know, providing my details.
And I had an issue with not reaching out to ask for help. So coming, being in the Rock program, being around you guys, kind of like helped me to get past that. It really did, especially if it was a stranger.
There were staff members at Rock that were formerly incarcerated, made it way more comfortable for me to open up and for me to talk to without the fear of being judged.
I'm able to have an empathy and connection with students that I wouldn't be able to have had I not had the experiences I had, both the very painful and bad, and also the positive while incarcerated. What we provide goes far beyond the material resources. And I would say it really offers a, a student the chance to be themselves.
That's a really unique feature about our program is that we provide Clean Slate services to remove barriers for when people get their degrees that they don't have an issue with getting a job.
The partnership between Rock and Clean Slate is so effective because the two programs have a shared vision of helping people reach their full potential. And they understand it's important to meet people where they are.
Clean Slate and Rock have given me a power. By realizing that this program exists and by allowing for them to empower me, I don't worry about my past determining my future.
I think that what is so scary for people about the system is all of the things that they don't know. That's why really we have attorneys and people who specialize in Clean Slate. It's because we do this work every day and we know the ins and outs of what could happen and what will happen. And that, just being able to offer that information to people is often a source of a lot of relief.
I'm happy. You know, it, it felt real good. It felt real good. I called my mom, you know, like, yo, guess what?
Going through the Clean Slate program really, really, really built my confidence up to want to apply, you know, start applying for jobs.
By the way, yes, I got my slate cleaned, so I'm very excited about that. And I just want to say for those of you that are out there, believe in yourself and do the work. It helps. And that's what Rock did for me. They did a great job. I mean, I want to thank them so much.
I just have so much more freedom. I haven't applied for other jobs yet, but like, I know that if I apply, then they won't know I'm, that I used to be a felon. I had to like catch myself, but I'm not a felon.
It's really my gratitude to Roger Chung for his leadership, Vincent Garrett, Alejandro Landon. This is a program by and for formerly incarcerated students. And so just want to thank again the board for their support for Laney College and for programs like these that really do provide that next step. And multiple students in that video transferred on to UC Berkeley and other schools. And I will say that Vincent Garrett, who was also there, who I'll highlight later tonight in a presentation, was a graduate of Merritt College, formerly incarcerated, and also went on to UC Berkeley and is now working and supporting our program. So my thanks again to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilkerson. And trustee Bonilla, Madam President, that concludes my chancellor's report.
Thank you so much. Yes, thanks to all the president, presidents for their reports. Congratulations, Tim Karas. And what a beautiful video to end the president's reports on, thank you, President Gilkerson. And what a beautiful video to end the president's reports on. Thank you, President Gilkerson. We'll go ahead and move into presentations. 3.1 Security Plan First Read, Chancellor.
Okay, if you'd just give me one moment here to share the screen, and maybe I'll have much more success with that than I did with the video. Okay. And you see in the presentation PowerPoint?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, members of the board, we are here to provide you with a presentation and a first reading of the proposed Public Health and Safety Model. As you know, we are coming up on the end of the contract with the Sheriff's Department. And one of the things that I do want to say, if I can just go to the next slide, is that, let me just move this out of the way, that we will be talking to you about, we'll be giving you an introduction, what we did, what we learned, the governance process we went through, and a recommended model and next steps. In doing so, I want to just start with acknowledging that this wasn't just our bright idea, that indeed, the trustees asked us to make some recommendations that incorporated a more community and student-centered approach to the health and safety of Peralta Community College District. And many of you are able to recite histories and occurrences that happened long before many of us were here. But we are at this point where we have done just that. What I want to say is that it was important for us to recognize that there is a possibility of developing and devising a model that is more equity, more focused and framed on equity, that escalates, that de-escalates the tensions and has a focus on connecting the community and demonstrating the kind of respect to the students, such that we create an environment where students feel safe and supported in their learning environment. Now, we did a number of things that you will hear from this presentation, but it means that there are several voices that had to be brought to bear on this. And those voices included, for an example, connecting with the students and faculty and staff, doing the surveys to get information, taking into consideration surveys from previous years, connecting with the Restoring Our Communities program to get feedback and guidance and support and direction from those that have been formerly incarcerated or that are currently on our campuses, connecting with local traditional law enforcement, connecting with security strategists, and connecting with locally elected officials, connecting with the mayor's office. Just a number of things, including the mental health components, connecting with different people that have been involved. For an example, getting information about the Kahoots program. So it's been an extensive set of work to address this issue and to bring to you a model that takes a lot of that into consideration and then refocuses the model, the overall model for Peralta Community College District. The other thing that I do want to say before we get into that, though, is that we also recognize that literally the day after we loaded the recommended model up on the board docs, that literally, board members started getting calls for not using traditional law enforcement at all. And so the model that we prepared here does not completely remove that, but we recognize that this is a first reading, and we will follow the direction of the board in terms of the continued work that we need to do in order to determine what those next steps are. So with that, I'm going to ask Lee Sata to take the next step here.
Yes, thank you, Chancellor, and good evening, board members and members of the community and colleagues. I'd like to start by just sharing with you what we did in a little bit greater detail. What we did right at the beginning was the Chancellor convened an early morning task force that met nearly every week or over a month, and we discussed plans, we reported on the tasks that we were assigned, and we divided, of course, the tasks among the various task force members. We hired a security consultant, Mr. Anthony Fennell, who will be presenting his work a little bit later in his presentation, to assist in preparing various options and helping us try to understand the various types of security available. Mr. Fennell was successful in reaching out to locally elected officials, including the mayor's office, and also tried to reach all of the city council members. In the end, he was able to speak with council members Bass and Cobb. He also spoke with the Assistant City Administrator. They all expressed support for a community-based model that integrated traditional law enforcement with a community-based model focused on de-escalation. We spoke with traditional law enforcement, as the Chancellor stated, including the Oakland Police Department's Chief of Staff, Lieutenant Cookfin. We learned from him, actually, that there's a new program that OPD is working on that will feature a mental health component, though it hasn't been ruled out, as they're kind of pausing on some things as they search for a new chief. We spoke to Lieutenant Verbeck several times, and we conducted a tour of the Alameda County Sheriff Operations Office, which is there in the district office. We received several staffing models from the Alameda County Sheriff's Office, and we received data about the programs that were implemented in the past year by Lieutenant Verbeck and his team. We also attended a community event hosted by Rebecca Kaplan and Black Lives Matter some time ago, featuring representatives from Kahoots, a mental health program that's based in Yedine, Oregon. And we followed up with a Kahoots representative by phone to better understand their program. We reached out to several community groups, including the Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center in the Oakland chapter of the NAACP. We spoke with community leaders, including Chris Brown, the Chief of Policy and Governmental Affairs for PRC, Dr. Lawrence Van Hook from the PAAA, and Mr. Kerhop Ak from Community Ready Corps. We reviewed the results and findings from our 2017 survey, and the Office of Institutional Research prepared a new survey, results of which will be shared later in this presentation by Vice Chancellor Brown. Also, as was mentioned earlier, President Gilkerson convened a district-wide community forum, attended by students, staff, and administrators, which was co-hosted by the Restoring Our Communities organization, which was featured in the video that Dr. Gilkerson just shared. And Dr. Gilkerson will share more of those results about the forum later, also in this presentation. So in short, our collective efforts have led to a security model that we wish to present to you this evening, that features very strongly a component of community-based security, mental health, and policing that incorporates de-escalation as a key feature of how we go forward. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Brown to discuss the survey findings with you. Thank you.
Thank you, VC Sata, and good evening to the Board of Trustees, colleagues, and community. I wanted to, tonight, to talk to you about the survey that was conducted on students. The last slide indicated that a survey was conducted in 2017, and then we recently, this spring semester, conducted another survey. But I wanted to let the Board of Trustees know that this survey was a little bit different. We noticed that when we received the draft survey, that it did not ask for demographics, including race, nor gender, nor age. And so we added that. And it did not ask questions about community engagement. And so we added questions around that. And what that did was that gave us the ability to disaggregate and look at things from an intersectional framework. So there's a full report, but I'll share with you a few of the data points that have impacted our discussions. So first off, there were 798, almost 800 respondents to the survey. 68% of those respondents were students. We also did give the survey out to staff, administration, faculty, to the entire Peralta community. And you can see the racial, ethnic distribution of the survey noted there as well. The survey asked a number of questions that included how students, or how the Peralta community feels about crime, what their experiences have been with police services on campus, et cetera. So the snapshot here that you're looking at is asking respondents in the last year, "Do you think crime on your campus slash district has?" And you can see that the majority of the respondents have said that it has more or less remained the same. 63% indicate that, and 24% indicate an increase, and 13% a decrease. Thank you. Questions were asked about the quality and adequacy of coverage. And the first question in general, "How do you feel about the quality of police services on your campus?" And you can see that 20% said excellent, 28% said good, and then the remaining percentages said terrible, poor, or average. And how would you rate the number of deputies at the campus or district? And it was pretty much an even split of some saying, 43% saying adequate, and 47% saying too few. We also asked for, anyone in the community, did they have direct contact with police services? And then asked those respondents a series of questions. And the question that was asked was, "Were the services received, performed to your satisfaction?" 218 respondents answered that, and 85% said yes. They received satisfactory service when they had contact with the police services on campus or district. We also asked, "Were any questions you had answered to your satisfaction?" And again, 85% said yes. And "Was the person who provided you with service helpful and thorough?" And 87% said yes. Again, the respondents being about 218 to 221. But when it came to questions about community, the responses shed some very good light for us to consider and that we discussed as a subcommittee looking at issues of safety. And so I'll read these questions to you, and they are: "To what extent does your college police work together with college community members to solve local college problems?" And you can see that the majority of the respondents, or 65% or so, are saying not at all, very little, or somewhat. The next question, "To what extent does your college police regularly communicate with community members? Websites, public forums, emails, public meetings?" And again, the majority of the respondents are saying not at all, or a little, or somewhat. And "To what extent does your college police make it easy for community members to provide input about police services?" And again, the majority are saying not at all, very little, or somewhat. And another community-based question was, "To what extent does your college police develop relationships with college community members, students, faculty, and staff?" And again, the majority are saying not at all, a little, or somewhat. And when you disaggregate by race, we found that there were differences based on race and ethnicity. And so each of those questions were broken down by race and ethnicity. And the white student or faculty or administrative responses and the Latinx responses indicated the most dissatisfaction around the community engagement with our current police services and the community of Peralta. And you can see those figures there. And again, "To what extent does your college police work together with college community members to solve local problems?" The same question asked up above, but disaggregated by race, shows that there is white students, as well as Latinx students, who are responding more strongly than others about the need for more community engagement with college police.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Gilkerson?
Thank you. So trustees, I'm pleased to present about the fact that the Laney College Restoring Our Communities program really wanted to host and design a presentation and interactive discussion on community safety within the Peralta Community College District. And I think it's important to frame the forum and what happened in a design principle that was not law enforcement-focused, but really centered on exploring our values and the strengths and opportunities within the district community. And so that was really what we were attempting to do. And so what you can see, there are two really important, two to three framing questions that you can see there, but really thinking about what keeps, things keep our community safe, the role we play actively, we are all members of this community, the values and strengths we can rely on, and what actionable steps we can take within the Peralta Community College District to really value the humanity of all of our members. And we really want to underscore and ensure agency and safe spaces for everyone. Next. So there was a really, the presentation and the forum was designed on a framework for healing and harm and building community, for healing harm and building community within the Peralta Community College District, and the fact that we're centered in communities already. And so working with Roger Chung, the Director at Department Chair in Ethnic Studies, and the Director of our Restoring Our Communities program, Vincent Garrett, our Student Services Specialist, and Diane Chang, the Associate Dean, we worked together and were able to formulate something, working with Zach Norris, the Executive Director of the Ella Baker Center for Human Rights, founder of Restore, and a long illustrious sort of history, and work in the community around these efforts. And Rita Alfred, the founder of the Restorative Justice Training Institute, came to provide a grounding presentation that really provided the groundwork for not only the conversation, but the opportunity for all of us to think about what we were talking about in terms of breakouts later on. And so the highlights of that presentation were around punishment versus accountability. And you can see the topics there, addressing harm, preventing harm, an environment of intolerance and indifference, creating a new environment and context, and responding to harm in schools. After the grounding presentation, we worked with all of the attendees, and I will say that we had a large group of attendees. Many students, faculty members, classified professionals, and administrators attended. And so we broke out each group and had different facilitators for each discussion group. But you'll see on the left, the three questions that we asked of our discussion group sessions. And really asking sort of what it looks to feel safe, what are the values and strengths in our community, and what, how do we define safety within the Peralta Community College District? So on the next slide, you'll see that really what we did here was frame out, and there is a full report as well. I'm not sure if it's uploaded into board docs, but there was a report that kind of gives a greater detail on some of the breakout group notes. But what I've provided here is clusters of feedback that we received from the community and those attendees. So when we look at feeling safe, the question around feeling safe, it was an issue around physical safety. So comments were things like coming to campus day or night and not feeling physical harm, or having administration support safety concerns of faculty and staff, and knowing people on campus. For emotional learning and safety was one large area where there was a lot of feedback about this. Having the space to make mistakes, not feeling like an imposter on campus, trusting that people have good intentions, having space to share issues and solutions, and really having faculty be able to manage classrooms with a mix of college and high school students, and feeling like you can feel free to express yourself without being policed by others. And some comments throughout the groups were about more love on campus. Relational safety with law enforcement and security personnel was another area that was, came up around feeling safe and having... was, came up around feeling safe and having, feeling that situations oftentimes would unnecessarily scale to law enforcement and having them intervene. And really wanting communicative personnel and the security personnel to be a larger part of the community, which is a lot of what Vice Chancellor Brown pointed out in her, in the survey data as well. Identity and status, safety is really around ESOL and our immigrant students and wanted to be taken seriously, that was some of the comments that came out. Understanding of the protections from ICE raids and seeing people who look like them is what a lot of folks said, which means gender, ethnicity, sexuality. And then certainly, basic need safety was another thing about feeling safe, having the things that students felt and staff felt like they need, like food and money. In the area of strengths that lead to safety, there was a lot of great discussion around this area, and you'll see that there are four areas that were highlighted in groups. Diversity was really highlighting the fact that in our district, there is a lot of age diversity and wisdom in the classrooms, that these, our classrooms are not just the traditional college student, but have great diversity and ability to learn from people with many different experiences, and that there are the experiences of those like, for instance, who've been formerly incarcerated, or socioeconomic diversity is showing up in our classrooms. Our another diversity and strength that leads to safety is really people identified our students as being that, their lived experience, their civic and political engagement. And also a highlight was faculty members, professional passion from faculty, and the fact that faculty, to many of the students, make students feel empowered and valued. And then the other category which is highlighted here was really around, many people talked about mentorship and this ability they felt like on their campuses, their willingness to speak up and to speak out even with differences. And so we, that there was a sense that that had been a cultivated community in the district. Around steps and recommendations, you'll see that there are a number of things there. And so the recommendations sort of range from process and procedures, right, developing guidelines to work with law enforcement, developing a collective understanding, campus and community engaging, right, having and creating spaces for dialogue, doing more work on shared solutions. Professional development was a huge area of conversation, training in trauma and board care, training in restorative justice, developing certificate or pathways. Environmental improvements was another area as well, that really a lot of conversation was about better lighting on campus, hot water, access to soap, clean bathrooms, places to sit, and feeling like there are safe zones. And then these investments, more investment in mental health services for staff and students, providing students with greater access to resources, and be more intentional and active in helping and engaging students in defining what it feels like to be safe on campus. So in conclusion, really wanted to say that really what I gleaned and what I think a lot of the conversation was from the forum was that creating safe environments in this district and on our campuses and at the district office is about public safety, being free from harm and assault, which is the baseline for what really Zach Norris is talking about in his book, We Keep Us Safe, and economic security as a baseline for food and shelter. But one of the things that I could really clearly see in a lot of the conversation was the need to really provide for emotional safety, this contextual understanding and training for our students. And so really, what the recommendation from the forum and what we saw was that we really need to have the courage in our response to public safety as a way to build public health, to build community on our campuses. And so as we move to think about the model in the next slide, sort of what we were thinking about is that really the framework that you've seen on this is really about public health and safety and reframing the way that we think about this work. And so that it is not these things, but many of the sort of foundational principles that I had talked about before. And if we're going to talk about equity-based alternatives, community-centered models, and respect and de-escalation as a response, it's really putting systems in place that ensure every student has a chance for success, right? And that at the core of what we do, there needs to be a recognition between the students' relationship with schooling and policing in a historical and contemporary context for the communities we serve. And including that, and there also needs to be training, support, and care for the faculty and staff who are serving in these things. So this was the framework for which many of the work that B.C. Sada now will talk about, as well as Mr. Fennell.
Good evening. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellors, students, faculty, staff, administrators, and guests. Incorporated into this comprehensive approach was shared governance. This, the concept of incorporating a community policing model was presented at the safety, the Health and Safety Committee, the Security Committee, the District Facilities Committee, and as well as in the Chancellor's Cabinet. In two of the four meetings, there was actually a vote that was taken, which was voted in favor of moving forward with a concept which did incorporate a community policing model. We realize that this is going to be an ongoing conversation, but we do appreciate the fact that other faculty, staff, administrators were able to take part in the process. So with that, I'll turn it back over to B.C. Sada.
So Chancellor, next slide, please. I'd like to introduce to you our security and safety expert. His name is Mr. Anthony Fennell, and he has quite a background both in traditional law enforcement and as well in community security services. And he has done a ton of work on various options, including a model that would kind of combine some of the things that we're already doing with a community-based model that is tied to our mission here at Peralta Community College District. And I'll stop there and let Mr. Fennell talk you through some of the options that he's come up with.
Yes, and thank you, Dr. Sada, and thank you to the Board of Trustees for having me here this evening. Much of the process has already been discussed about how I was able to work through and come up with some models that I think would be viable. Now, I came up with nine options, and I know this seems like quite a bit, but I started with a status quo approach with the inclusion of a community-based component. And the community-based component would be an entity that would, what I would call be the first tier of response. And they would respond to incidents that were primarily considered low-level or low-risk types of incidents. And I was able to take the information from the number of incidents that Alameda County Sheriff had responded to in 2019, which was a total of three hundred and forty-five incidents. And based on those incidents, was able to break them down into categories or incident types. So came up with eighty-eight different categories or incident types. And with each of those, I had a low-risk, medium-risk, and high-risk qualifier. And based on the level of risk and also on the level on the incident type, was able to determine if it was best responded to by a community member, being a member of a community-based organization that was non-law enforcement, a community member or an officer, community member and an officer, and only an officer or a law enforcement response. And out of, out of, once we did that, I determined that out of three hundred and forty-five incidents, there were a hundred and seven incidents that were classified as high-risk based on the initial dispatch call and based on the nature of the incident, thus requiring only a law enforcement response. And that amounted to about thirty-one percent of the incidents. And out of those hundred and seven incidents, a hundred and ten arrests were made in 2019. So when I look at the low-risk or minimum-risk incidents based on the dispatch call, there were a hundred and twenty-five, or thirty-six percent of the total incidents. And then the remaining thirty-three percent of the incidents, or a hundred and thirteen, were classified as medium-risk. And I looked at those as where they could, possibly some of those could result in a response from a community-based organization as the first tier. They might best be served with a combination of law enforcement and community-based, particularly to have the community do the follow-up to some of those incidents. Now, when you start looking at the models, we took the feedback from the surveys, took the feedback from interviews that I conducted, the various staff members, administrators, city of Oakland leadership, city councilors, law enforcement, Lieutenant Verbeck, and also from law enforcement representatives from Oakland PD. Took all that feedback and determined that the vast majority of people and the common theme was to have a hybrid model, which incorporated, heavily incorporated a community-based component that was skilled in de-escalation, had, also had a mental health component that could be incorporated in, and was heavily based on community policing, interaction, and relationship development, or relationship building between the students and the student body and the staff and the safety and security personnel. And then the last piece would be a community-based organization that also hired from the community and promoted or helped the student body become, get training and de-escalation techniques, community policing techniques, and then also help build that path from being a student to eventually, if they so chose, to go into law enforcement. So taking all that into consideration, I looked at the current configuration of the security model and added the components of the community-based entity and replaced segments of the sheriff or law enforcement-based entities from within those models. And they were configured in various ways, but mostly based on the status, I mean, the data from the crime stats around the various campuses, and also looking at the campus size and configuration and hours of operation. So in my report, I have, like I said, the nine models, but they began with, like I said, the status quo model, which if you incorporate the community-based component and increase the student aid component, there was actually an increase in the overall expenditure or cost implication, which I understand and know that that's not what you were looking for. But I had to start from the status quo and then include what the community forums input was. So then I began to look at each one with various configurations. And the one that I would recommend, and it is the security model, which I call security model number seven, and it's included in my report that I've submitted. It allows for a strong community-based component at the College of Alameda, and it also incorporates the private security guard service and student aid interns that would work alongside with the community-based personnel. It would, it does not include any Alameda County Sheriff's Office coverage, and the reason being is because the Alameda County Police Department is very responsive when they're called upon, and based on the crime data and the incident data to that campus, it's very low incidence, and the crime is in the surrounding neighborhood, but not, there were no incidents directly onto the campus from that, from that aspect. So I was able to remove the Alameda County Sheriff's coverage from there, which had a cost savings. Same with Merritt College, again, the community-based security, the security guard service and the student aid service, and again, removing the Alameda County Sheriff's coverage, again, for the same reasons that overall crime statistics in a five-block area for the last six months showed that Oakland Police Department only recorded one criminal activity, which was a burglary. Berkeley City College was a little different. They had a very large number of criminal incidents in a five-square block around the campus, but no incidents on the campus. And all of those incidents were handled directly by Berkeley Police and BART Police, and they were primarily centered around the downtown area and the BART station. So Berkeley had, again, a strong community-based security. They also had more private security protection because of the evening hours and because of the annex and to help patrol the parking area, but they also included strong student aid coverage. Now with Laney College, we had the most for the community-based security, and that was, again, because of the footprint and the size of the student body, and same with the private security and the student aid, but it also has the sheriff's deputies and the sheriff's technicians to help man the twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week dispatch center, as well as other services that the sheriff's department provides. It also includes supervision of a lieutenant and a sergeant to help manage and supervise the deputies. So with that plan, it realized an eleven-point-four percent savings over the twenty fiscal year nineteen-twenty expenditures, and that came to about, that plan came to five-point-four million dollars total. And, but all of that's included in the report. So, you know, I, again, Dr. Sada spoke of the steps that were taken, the people and the avenues that were taken to gather this information, and it's also been mentioned about the mental health component, which is very, very important piece to this, which would coincide with the community-based personnel that would be selected. And all of that addresses the concerns and the wishes that were advised or provided on the surveys. So again, that report will be available, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has for specifics. Thank you.
And also, trustees, just let me say, I will make that report available to you. It wasn't available to me at the time of posting of the agenda. The final draft, the final version was not available. And then I'm gonna go ahead and finish up the presentation, and also let me also make a small correction in that there are several alternatives that can be pieced together in this one model. In other words, there are different versions of, in the report, of how we use the community organizations or how we use the sheriff's department, et cetera, at different levels. So that's what he means by the multiple models, is actually the model we're presenting to you is a single model that is hybrid, has multi-components. But within each one of those components, there are different options. But within each one of those components, there are different options in the way it can be configured. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then um Dr. Sada, if you would wrap it up?
Sure, Chancellor. So just to try to clarify again, a little bit further, uh the model that's contemplated uh does represent a reduction in traditional security forces at three of our four colleges. It does leave some um of Alameda County Sheriff's Office available at the district office, including the twenty four seven three sixty five dispatch. The model that we're looking at for Laney would include five um deputies and a sergeant and a lieutenant. Uh we would lose the ability to have badging services provided by the Alameda County Sheriff. Uh and that would be taken on internally. And um there would be an overall reduction cost, as Mr. Fennel said. And um it represents overall, as the Chancellor just said, the ability to kind of shift and balance a new model at all of the campuses. And in particular, as Mr. Fennel said, based on the data, we would not have personnel stationed any longer at Merritt or at the College of Alameda. And then on our final slide, we're just gonna share with you that, you know, this is where at again, it's a first read. We're here to um seek your input. And at the next meeting, we'll make the appropriate adjustments to bring the plan back that fits the needs that you may have. I also want to share with you that we have a community based um vendor solicitation already out on the street and that that document reviewed by, again, the several of the folks that we shared with you earlier, who provided input and guidance on what the scope of work would look like. And I think that's kind of it. I think there is still some time uh remaining that we'll need to work through the details of a transition plan, depending on the type of services that you as a board would like to see for our community. So thank you very much for your time.
Uh Trustee Bonilla, that concludes the presentation. Uh and in that same board item is the first read of the contract that will be a part of that component. And of course, you saw in the subsequent timeline that we would then follow up with the uh the results of the RFP for the the contract for the second part of that component, which would be the community focused group. So uh with that, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Chancellor, and thank you for um pulling together the team um to provide uh such a comprehensive um uh report, um which includes the surveys and all of the other elements. Deeply appreciated. Um I'll go ahead and open up for questions amongst the trustees, and it looks like I've got trustee Handy in the queue.
Hi, uh I I do have a a question. So your your suggestion is that uh because Alameda has a responsive um police force that there not be um that we not utilize our own um officers at that campus. You also said that at Merritt had low incidents um or not recorded incidents. I I beg to differ on the merit piece. And my other challenge with merit not having an officer there, even though they've only had one, basically was in a car. It was not not really an efficient model. I mean, we that we get out of one, but it was not efficient. We we do need um um what did we what did we call them before? Student um officers escorts to cars and things because it's dark.
Student ambassadors.
Ambassadors. But um I do know the that there were incidents in the because of the hills and homeless people living in the hills. And there was an attack on a female in the Barbara Lee Building on the first floor, and that was last year. You can't be everywhere, but I am concerned because students are concerned about walking to their cars at night and stop at Merritt College. And um I'm not necessarily saying that we, well, no, I just think that we we need to do a better job. I don't know what it looks what it's gonna look like, but Oakland O P D absolutely not responsive. So that is not helpful if there was an emergency um there in the hills. That's just not going to happen. And then the other challenge that we really have to look at in this day and age is the racist history of the Alameda Police Department. And I am born, raised in Oakland. We did not go to Alameda as children. And even um even as adults, they profile and they stop men men and boys of color. So we don't really want them um on the campus as much. We really need to have our own trained, culturally competent people. As you see, one of the issues we were talking about early today was a former student valedictorian, older man, doing his exercise in the street and being attacked and taken down by the police in Alameda um weeks before um weeks before um Jo um George Floyd. So I think that we we need to tweak it some more. We need to have a little bit more discussion. I understand you collect data, but that doesn't necessarily mean that um the anecdotal data that comes from students. And my 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 information comes from student leaders who would call me at night and say, you know, um I don't want sec I don't, we don't want the Sheriff's Department ticketing our cars. And um also, we need more people walking around. Those issues have been worked out in the past year, their relationship, but I don't think it changes the fact that Merritt Campus is very isolated and dark. And um I don't know what that presence is gonna look like, but I don't think an abandoned presence is going to be in the best interest and safety of our students. So those are just this my thoughts on on um on those two pieces. I do think we need um a different inclusive model. I'm just not sure. I just need to see more information and as as the discussions move on, this is the first read. Um I can have a better idea of how it looks. Plus, it's late and I, this is my second Zoom and handing out meals, so I'm really tired. So a long presentation, I I think I'm missing a lot of it. But I just wanted to add um those pieces to be thought and considered as we um as we deliberate on this process. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Uh trustee Brown.
Thank you, uh Madam President. I want to first thank the um Chancellor and V C Sada and the team that uh put this presentation together. It's very much appreciated, and it's very comprehensive. And I am very much appreciative of the comprehensive um community policing model that would bring us into a new way of thinking regarding our security and safety. Um as um Dr. Garcia had mentioned and as the speakers mentioned earlier, it's necessary to be intentional about the matter in which we um address our uh concerns and issues on our campuses so that we are developing policies and practices with an eye towards his how they have historically, how security has historically been provided and the impact that it has on our students. And I appreciate the thought that's gone into this uh process and and this development. Um I, it's important to note that we have been at this precipice three times time after time when the uh security contract is up for renewal. And part of the reason that we keep reinventing this 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 uh cliff that we're on right now is because we need a consistent way to follow up on issues and prioritize issues that are focused around our community and community input. I think that our lack of committees, we had a security committee two years ago. I've been asking to have committees for the last eighteen months. But not having a committee process divests and disenfranchises the people and that we serve from having input in our campuses and our colleges. And I think that we have to be intentional in saying we don't want racism, yet we close off the community that are predominantly people of color by not having committees. And because of that, and because of the high turnover rate that we have, we keep reinventing the same problems. So I sympathize very much with the um frustration of the speakers earlier because we have tried to resolve this issue three times. And each time we ask for a new uh model to come back. And this time, the chancellor listened. And I think it's important to note that um, yeah, I'm glad that that we were able to follow up, but we did the same thing with um our interim chancellor and set up appointments and went to the appointments, and the request was made again. Can we have committees? Can we have the student input? Can we work with our formerly incarcerated students? I I would like to urge any listener who cares about community input to implore that we reinstate committees so that we cannot have just the voices of the people that are work for Peralta, that um are in this in the silo, but that we integrate the community where we live. And we could have gotten to this point sooner. And in fact, I, you know, I've gotta say, I called the chancellor and offered some of my community resources, which were used to develop this program and also this the mental health first responder concept. And it didn't have to take this long. And as a trustee, I'm elected by the people that are in my neighborhood, in my community, to do just that, to bring their voice and their values to the business of this district. So I would ask that we please not divest those people of their voice and disenfranchise them and allow them to be integrated into the discussions. I appreciate the the uh surveys and the work that was done, but we didn't have to do that with such limited time and without the community integration. So there is a way to not have to keep starting over, and that's to allow the community to participate.
Thank you, trustee. Um trustee Brown, um do I have any other trustees who would like to make comments or ask questions? Just trustee Withrow.
Yo. I'd just like to make a a quick comment that um the analysis that was done, the extensive analysis that was done is much appreciated. Providing um health and safety in a in a diverse community is not easy. There's no simple solution. And uh I think by going to the extent that you all did uh in analyzing it in in many different directions is the way we have to go. Uh I think it not only, not only will it save money, not only save money that we can put into other areas, but um I think it'll provide a much safer environmental set. And um having been a proponent of community policing for well over thirty years, uh this is one of the first that I've seen where it's more than just a word, you know, community policing, whatever. Uh it it, you have to integrate it, analyze it, and and um put it into a a broad spectrum of involvement. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez, when?
Thank you um very much for the report. And uh in particular, I wanna um congratulate the administration on 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 finally bringing uh an alternative model to board after three years. I am sincerely hoping that um we are not gonna be in the position of having to do an up or down vote at our next meeting on the county sheriff's contract again. With, you know, one meeting where we have a presentation and then the very next meeting, uh we have to have a vote. This obviously a a you know, comprehensive set of data that we've gotten, a a report to be complicated with different variations and models and hopefully budgets, et cetera, that we haven't seen. And so I, you know, I implore the administration, do whatever you need to do to do a month by month extension of the sheriff's contract so that we are not put in the position that we've been put in for the last two years of having to say to the administration, no, you you can't, you can't uh put us in this position yet again. So um and then in terms of the input, what I have, what I really appreciated with the survey input, now that we've got a proposed model that's been developed off of these community forums and so forth, now what I'm hoping is that uh we can use the shared governance process to get the formal feedback of our student representatives, our classified professionals, our faculty members, um all bringing their perspectives of being students, of providing services, of engaging in teaching and learning so that we really have a three sixty set of inputs as we we move forward with with this process. Um again, thank you very much. I look forward to reading the report and digging in to understand this a little bit better. Uh this is far and away the the most interesting alternative that I think we've seen. In fact, similarly alternative we've ever seen uh to a sheriff's contract. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Uh trustee Reese.
Yes, just um a couple of questions and then a comment. Mr. Fennel, you you had stated, this one needs just clarification for me. I may have missed it. You had stated a five point four million dollar model. What what comprised that model?
It was uh sheriffs, uh personnel, a uh yet to be determined community based organization that would uh again, be that first tier responder. Utilization of the contract uh private guard, private security service, and then uh the fees or the the cost to uh use the student aids and and the uh cost to go along with that.
Okay. Um then then my follow up question to that is if the high risk incidents that you came across in your report were thirty percent, um the incidents that necessitated the the police as the first responders, I guess my question would be, why why is EXO seen as the primary contract proposed? And I don't know if that would be to you or that would be to the district or bringing together your information with the district proposal.
Um I would direct that to the chancellor and let her figure out amongst her team um who who could best answer that.
Yes, thank you. Um and actually, um the the proposal uh in the area of high risk that Mr. Fennelly talked about uh includes the component of the Sheriff's Department uh contract as well. So I think that was the stats that he named from Laney College, which would include EXO, the community organizations, uh as well as the sheriff's uh contract and the student ambassadors.
Right, but if I'm understanding it well, what I'm reading is that thirty percent really needed kind of an EXO or the police response and seventy percent or so needed community policing or um other community services, but not necessarily the high risk incidents that needed the police response.
Right, which is why you see a dis a change in the recommendation around the sheriff's contract, the decrease in that, so you still would be able to respond to those and 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 uh meet the needs of the anticipated high risk areas, but but actually decrease the traditional response and increase the community organization response for that for those two thirds where it's not.
Yes, yes. And I think for me, the calculus did come into play because if thirty percent of the incidents were such, then the contract within a five point four million dollar model would be about thirty percent of that contract too as well. then the contract within a five point four million dollar model would be about thirty percent of that contract too as well. And from the contract that is, uh, proposed to us as part of this for EXO. It is certainly more than thirty percent of the five point four model. Yeah, that's just more along the lines of seventy-five percent.
Yeah, that's just not the, that's just not the reasoning. The cost of the professional services of the, of the sheriff's, uh, contract is not tied to the, um, the percentage of, um, high-risk areas. The, the cost of providing, the staffing is tied to the salaries and the cost that it would take the sheriff's department to provide. So there's just a, it, it sounds, it sounds rational, but it's just a, it's just a false premise.
Okay. Um, and then my comment would be, you know, fifty percent of my, and I think we've talked about this in, in some of our other meetings. But fifty percent of my voting constituents have conveyed their security concerns and they want the contract to move forward. Fifty percent of my constituents also say very emphatically cancel the contract with EXO. And so this dichotomy, you know, speaks to the complexity of these twin goals, which we've always had as a district and have really come out today in terms of safety and equity. But the fact that these twin goals are at odds with one another, you know, historically and obviously specifically given the deaths of Mr. Floyd, Briada Taylor, um, and so many others that were in fact not safe because of the police. So I guess my question is, this semester provides us, if, if nothing else, this coming semester, potentially this coming year, because it's going to be remote education, potentially the year, provides us an opportunity for the district to create a safety model, such as what we're speaking about today, that centers these two concerns. Because most of our students are actually not going to be on campus. Um, and, and so for me, just a question, obviously not something to be, to be, uh, talked about or discussed further today. But just a question in terms of if we go forward this year with EXO at the, at the amount that we have been for, for the next year. And if our report from Mr. Fennel and our report with the task force and the committees have really brought us, brought us all of this information. This seems like a good fall semester year to actually conceive of a real plan that brings together many of the things that were talked about at the task force meetings. Um, in terms of what would it look like in order for, for our safety and security to be achievable in more, uh, creative ways? Um, mediation, intervention, restorative justice philosophies. Basically the things that were talked about, that were brought up by the, the presenters. Um, and I just want us to, to pause a little bit because fall and spring of twenty-one and twenty are different than any other semesters we've ever had. And so this might be a good opportunity to actually implement these models, um, right from the get-go. To kind of see where it brings us in terms of getting to a model that responds to safety and equity in ways that are, um, beneficial, complimentary, and also that respond to the needs of all of our students and therefore all of our students' success in our institutions. So just again, a question or a comment, uh, that I'd like to put out there.
Trustee, uh, Benia, may I?
Yes, please chancellor.
Uh, yes, trustee Reese, thank you for that, uh, statement. As a matter of fact, um, you are probably in the same position that other trustees are as well, where we had, you've had, you will have constituents, uh, voicing their uh, concerns about not having the sheriff's contract, as well as constituents that voiced their concerns about continuing the sheriff's contracts. What I want to do is suggest to the board though, is that by, we, we are bringing you a real model that is based on real plans. That is based on real data, that has engaged multiple constituencies, that has included the community. And, uh, what I, what I want to share with you is that actually, uh, particularly with the movement for the, uh, defunding of policing, uh, the call for defunding of policing, actually the way institutions are starting to do that is precisely the way in which we brought it before you today. Even though, uh, we, you know, started this, uh, approach long before, um, the events broke out around Mr. Floyd. And that is to promote a, uh, uh, kind of this hybrid multifaceted model. Now, we can definitely go back and, and adjust those, uh, the, the, the weight of the different components in the model. Uh, if that's, uh, what you'd like us to do. Um, if, uh, indeed you did not want to have a renewal of the sheriff's contract, then you would be looking at needing to have a transition, uh, to do that. Uh, and so you, you wouldn't just cut it off. And what we were asked for, which is what we, uh, thought we were delivering, was we were asked for a first reading and a second reading if we were going to consider the sheriff's contract. And, uh, that's what we tried to provide you today, a first reading of the contract. Uh, and an understanding what we typically get when we, when we do something like that is we, we get that the board appreciates having the full picture, the, what is the big picture. So we also provided you, here's what the full model would look like. And the pieces of that model would be, yes, the sheriff's contract that you can make a decision about next, uh, board meeting if you want to. The second thing would be the contract for the community-based organization that was out of the RFP process. We already have in place the contract for A1 Security Services is, it's up in two years. But it has a consideration clause each year that if we wanted to get out of it, we could. Uh, and, and building out of the student ambassadors program as well. So, uh, if the board says to us at this first reading, administration, we want you to go back and devise a model and come back to us with a model that does not include traditional law enforcement. We would go back and start to do that work and we would come back and tell you next month, here's what, uh, is, is, uh, possible. And here's the transition that's going to be required. And here's the contract you're going to need to, to pass in order to go through that transition.
Thank you, chancellor. Um, trustee Weinstein.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to thank, um, the chancellor and the team. Um, and vice chancellor Sarah Brown and vice chancellor Sada for putting together, and everybody else for putting together, um, an interesting, uh, way of looking at, um, Mr. Fennel, Mr. Finelli, uh, for looking at, um, security. Um, I did want to ask the, um, and maybe it was mentioned, but I, I kind of am getting tired. Um, the five point four million is less than, um, what we usually pay? Or not?
Yes, according to the, uh, information I had for fiscal year nineteen to twenty, I think that you were contracted out for about just under six point one million.
So six, six point one million? And it's gone down, it'll go down to five point four million?
Yes, but based on those numbers that I had, yes.
So it's, it's doesn't, given what you were describing, and of course you would know better because you've done the analysis. It seems like it's not going down enough if, if we're utilizing what you're talking about. Seems like it would be less, less than five point four million.
No, actually, we have, because we are adding components, we're building out the student ambassador, as well as adding the community-based, uh, component, which at the ratio that we have it is about a one point four million dollar addition. Uh, we've designed the model so that it still takes care of the coverage and public health and, uh, safety that is needed. But it decreased the, uh, contract of the sheriff's model, of the sheriff's contract, and allowed for us to add the additional, uh, pieces of it.
I'm going to assume, I don't know what that sound is, but I'm going to assume that that stating of the finances is in that, um, uh, the written project, the, the written description. We have those numbers there.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that, that would be helpful, I think, because I would be curious to know how much the, you know, how much in building it out, how much those other additional things, um, that you were talking about, how much that would cost us, because I think that's, um, important. We want to do that. I think the second thing, um, it's, it's very hard for me tonight to say that I want the sheriff and the sheriff's, um, people to be working on Peralta, to be working with Peralta at all. Now that might change next week when I'm feeling a little bit less upset about what's gone on, um, and in terms of what has gone on with the sheriff's work, not just in the last couple of weeks, but with ICE and with, um, other areas that they've worked in where they have not been kind in many, many ways. So from my perspective, it is, well, I understand, we need security to help with our students, to take care of our students. It's very important. I've spoken to people. I've spoken to students on different campuses when we had the emergency, um, committee. And have spoken to people and they are very concerned. But I'm just saying right now, it is hard for me to hear about the sheriffs, even though we're trying to make a different kind of model, it's hard for me to say that I want them to stay on our campus, our campuses. So I'm just trying to let you know kind of what I am. I'm sorry? I can't hear you. Oh, okay. I, I thought I heard you. Um, so. Did you say something? Well.
Go ahead, trustee Weinstein. Keep, keep going.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So anyway, I'm just expressing where I am. And if I have a couple of weeks and I start looking and reading and it might sound better to me. But right now, um, I, I, I just can't get behind the sheriff, uh, the Alameda sheriff. Um, and lastly, I do want, and I think that this has been a great beginning, to reach out to our communities. There's a lot of passion, as you know, there's a lot of passion going on right now in our communities. And, and even if there wasn't a lot of passion in our communities, we really want to bring them into the work that we're doing via the community, uh, via the committees, um, if there are committees that ever become, become established. Or it just in any way, it's really, it is really our responsibility to bring in the community and, and let them have a voice. Hopefully via the, the committees. So I, if I understood trustee Brown, I support her on that. Um, and that's, that's all I want to express. I, I think it'll, I, I want to read this. I want to sit back and read it um, at a time when I feel a little bit less, um, tired and, and agitated at the same time. But I do want to thank you all for the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Weinstein.
Chancellor, I, I think that I'd like to make a motion, um, Madam President. And I, and the motion is to take the chancellor up on her offer in terms of possibly coming back at the second reading with two other models, one, as you had said, without EXO and one with less EXO. Um, and I don't know if you gave me three models to pick from, but I thought that that's what I had heard. So our current as-is. Our, our current as-is. Um, and then I thought I heard one with even less EXO. Um, but with EXO still in it, and the third with no EXO. So that, that's what I heard as a three differing models, if those are possibilities.
Yeah, and, and thank you, um, trustee Weinstein, I mean, uh, trustee Reese. Because this is a presentation, I think this is, um, um, just a direction and feedback that we're giving to the chancellor at this point. Um, since this is a presentation, um, so definitely, um, feedback. Um, I also want to make a, a point of clarification on the document which has amendments one and two. The total compensation on this particular contract, um, that reads from July one, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty was for four point one million dollars. That's what the original contract was without, um, without overtime. Um, on the amendment, which I'm having a hard time finding because I got to search through all these. So perhaps someone can tell me on the amended, amended contract, what the total amount is for the EXO. Proposed amendment. Chancellor?
Yes, it looks like, hold on one second. Uh, it looks like three point eight, four, eight, two, two, one.
Okay. Um, I, I also would like to, um, I also would like to ask that you come back with bearing models, much to what trustee, um, Reese had just talked about. Um, but I also want to ask you, um, chancellor and your team to also consider that. Um, prior to, um, the murder of George Floyd, there was a sentiment about reform, police reform. That sentiment has literally changed overnight. From his death to the very next day, of all of those reformists asking for dis, disinvestment. And so even with the Ella Baker Center and Zach Norris, um, who I know and who does amazing work through the Ella Baker Center, um, has now asked through this letter of about twenty-two different community-based organizations, um, has had a shift in their own thinking on what, um, police, policing, uh, disinvestment looks like. And so I would ask that as you bring back these models, that we also incorporate, um, learning models infused with structural and historical racism, because that's been called out in ways that um, have never been called out in the past around kind of our institutional framework and how we are engaging, um, with procurement policies that promote certain types of behaviors and certain types of structures that perhaps, uh, we hadn't thought about more, um, thoroughly. The militarization of policing has been at the forefront here in Oakland. It's been in our face in ways against our young people, against our high school students, against children, against parents, communities, families that we've never seen, um, using chemical warfare um, on our, on our community. I mean, the tone for what policing looks like in the United States, east coast to west coast. Um, the dialogue is now open. It's clear, it's very raw. And although I appreciate tremendously the amount of effort that every one of you have put in to bringing this critical information forward because it's so important. There is another level that we've gone to since May twenty-fifth that really needs to resonate, um, with the, the, the new sets of information that you're going to bring back to us. And so I would offer that, um, as, as additional input. Okay, thank you. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Bonilla. This is very helpful, uh, discussion and we will, um, follow through.
Uh, I have an additional comment, if I may.
Yes, trustee, um, Brown.
I think it's important for us to recognize that the idea of alternative approaches to policing are not new to the African-American community. Not, they're not new to the black and brown community. And there are people who have worked on this project with the chancellor, who have been working diligently within the communities that Peralta is, uh, situated in. Um, and I think that if we were able to have a more open discussion that incorporated those voices in a, in a more collaborative and working relationship, that would be a healthier dialogue. What we are due with such critically important issues like our community safety. dialogue. What we are do with such critically important issues like our community safety, our campus climate, is we put those things on the back burner when those are actually supposed to be the first things at the top of our list, the environment that our students are in, student success and their safety. And I think that what we really have to do, again, is be intentional. Because if we're not intentional about the way that we approach things, we'll continue to get the same result and repeat the patterns, which has put this at the, at the back for the, the last couple of times that it's come up. And so I think that what we really ought to be doing is asking the Chancellor how we can collaborate with our community organizations that are in the areas we serve, so that we can develop a model that has some standards and some input from our community. And I know that the Chancellor had worked with the, her former college, Skyline College, to develop models of security and safety that were innovative. We could build on the practice that she's already had, and we could build on the knowledge in our community. But I implore the board to not close the door to the community input and to allow that to be collaborative. That was the conversation the first time we had this, this contract up. And yet, we have not been able to reinstate the Safety Committee, and that was something that Karen was serving on. So she understands how critically important that is, and I appreciate that, you know, you voicing that, Trustee Weinstein. And I think we really, when I say we have to be intentional, it means we have to break out of the mold that was followed. And we really have to put the collaboration with the community at the forefront of our actions and demonstrate that by doing something different. And if we want a different result, we absolutely have to take a different approach to the manner in which we govern. And that means to be more inclusive with the community. And we can't just ask the administration, bring me something else, because they are, that, they're academics and they are educators and they are definitely socially adept and socially active. But this is the community that we live in. We were elected. We're the representatives. And we need to turn to the voices of the people that have given us this opportunity to serve them and have their voices be included.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. I think you just reiterated exactly what we have just stated, I think, on a number of different levels. So, yes.
Will we have the communities involved and a committee? That's what I'm asking. I'm asking specifically for an intentional action to include the, the community's voice through a committee to address this issue and work with the Chancellor.
I think, I think, I think the Chancellor, I think the Chancellor has heard that loud and clear.
Yeah. What I do want to say is that we did form a task force. We did invite the community and we have, we have had community organizations attend the task force. We did reach out and visit them as well. We did connect with NAACP. We did connect with the African-American Association, Peralta African-American Association. So, so there's been extensive community connection, as well as inviting them into the task force meetings. We can do something different if you think we need to, but that's why we sponsored the forums, the invited, the, had worked with Rock to have the, the forum, as well as had a, a district-wide forum. So we've, we've done multiple things to include and engage the community and incorporate that, incorporate that in the work. We can do additional things if you think something is missing.
I think we really need to make sure they're open meetings that people are aware they can attend.
Oh, got it.
The, the democratic process, the open process, I think people need that transparency. And I do appreciate you reaching out. And I know that you're a longtime member of the NAACP and a critical race scholar. So I'm not questioning your capacity or your knowledge, but the, the democratic process, the transparency is something that Peralta has not moved, has not moved towards. We need to move into the light.
Yeah, point taken. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Handy?
I'm glad that we've had some clarifying statements because I was beginning to feel very confused. I really appreciate the report that was done today, and that is what we asked for. And I just have a couple of thoughts here. One, I, when people say constituents have called and saying, don't do the sheriff's contract, let me be real clear. I had a whole bunch of people calling my house, none of them black or brown, talking about what black and brown people needed. It was robo calls. It was an orchestrated action. That is not representative of the, of our community. That's representative of people taking advantage of the polarized state of the country right now. And I really don't appreciate it. And the reason that I, I say this is because I don't think we need to be reactionary. We asked for, we asked that they put something together. That's what was brought to us today. And now I think asking for something different than following the path that we started is being reactionary. And I got a text from a community member that said, people don't realize that reactionary policy got us the three strikes law after Richard Allen Davis killed Polly Class. And we see how that worked out for black people. Well, I think the same thing applies to this. Right now, it's a very different state. We've never experienced anything like what is going on right now. Yes, there are bad police. Yeah, there are bad people. There are good faculty. There are bad faculty. There are good employees are bad. I'm not believing in painting everyone with the same brush. And as I heard the commenters calling earlier today, talking about, we've got to protect the black and brown people. And we have this history of violence against people. I had to ask the Chancellor, when did this happen at Peralta? Because it didn't happen at Peralta. So I don't think we should be, we should be asking or changing our minds about what we ask for. I think that we have spent the past year asking that we have certain things incorporated, and we're on that path. And I think we should continue on that path rather than reacting to people who have their own agendas calling us. That, that doesn't serve us as well, because Peralta was already identifying these issues, the, and the relationships with the Sheriff's Department. That was two years ago. It's just taken us a while to get to asking for more specifics in a contract. But right now, the opportunists are there using it for all of their agendas. And I mean, I am tired of seeing people walking through our city, smashing our windows and painting our walls and saying, Black Lives Matter, except they're white and they're not from here. And they're Antifa and they are anarchists. So let's not get distracted on this particular piece, because I think we already have put in place what we thought was best for our campus. And so to continue on to incorporate, incorporate the committees, incorporate all that we've seen so that we can come for, come to a decision. But what I don't want to see us now is start directing to go off on a whole different tangent, because this is what we asked for. So I'd like to stay the course and see it through so that we could get something that really benefits our students and our campuses and not get off track, because people know how to organize, which we know they do, and they know how to call and they know how to stir stuff up. But they have not been spending the past two years trying to find, figure out what is going to be best for the district. So I think we just need to stay the course. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Handy. Trustee Reese?
Let me just make a statement to that. Number one, nobody's being reactionary. And number two, let's not minimize what people say, and let's not minimize their intentions either. For me, it was both true, factual, but also anecdotal in terms of the 50-50 split is a dichotomy in where, where people are, they want certain things and, and we're trying to figure out how to move forward. So yes, we are on the right track. What I'm asking for, which is also, I think, what we've asked for in the past, was different, were models. And we have a great model. We have a good model in front of us. And what Chancellor Stroud had stated or suggested was, we can come back with another model where EXO is minimized or no longer there. And I took her up on that offer and I said yes. But as, as individuals that are part of a public institution, let us not minimize what individuals say, nor should we try to minimize their intention either.
I'm not minimizing. I'm stating facts. You speak for yourself.
I am.
I am giving my observations unapologetically black with a kid who has issues with Sheriff's Department and policing and all of that, and speaking for my community. So you speak for your folks, which you guys are very good at organizing, but I am speaking to my absolute annoyance of people telling us, we don't know what we're doing, so let's organize and let's call and let's bug people and let's get them to shift from what they were elected and paid to do, which
I, I take issue with that.
That is best for our campus.
Yes, you can speak for yourself and I will speak for myself. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Handy. Thank you.
I have the courage of my convictions. I know exactly
As do I. Thank you. Shall we move on, Madam President? There seems to be no reason for the enforcing.
There, I'm finishing it for you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, trustees. Chancellor, we will move on to item 3.2, which is your risk management update.
Okay. And Trustee Bonilla, I had just sent you a message.
I just, I just seen it. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
We can, we can, we can table the next two items, 3.2 and 3.3. And we're moving on to consent. May I have a motion to approve?
Wait, wait, wait. Madam President, can I, can, can I interrupt that? Because we need to do the closed session action?
Yes. Madam Vice President, yes.
Thank you. And my apologies that this is so tardy, but we just got it, or a variation of it. At closed session, the board voted 7-0 to waive closed session confidentiality and privilege for trustees only in limited and specific interactions with their respective counsel and/or investigators related to an internal complaint. That was our closed session action.
Thank you for that. We are now moving on to item 4.1, Consent Calendar. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Excuse me, Trustee Bonilla, if I can interrupt.
Yes.
On your, on your motion to table the two items for the further, you, you, you may want to take a motion and
Those, those are just presentation chancellors. I don't believe we need a motion to, to table them, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve. Trustee Withrow, may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
And we have a second. And let's do roll call.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Weinstein had to leave.
Okay. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We are on action item 6.1, Ratification of Personnel Items.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve 6.1 through 6.7.
There is a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.7. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes. I, I do have a question, though. My question, Chancellor, maybe you can respond to this later, is at our draft agenda setting, we were going to talk about having the budget, the revised budget at the end of the third quarter for 1920, as well as the 2021 tentative budget on this agenda item when we were talking about the contract ratifications. And it's not on this agenda.
Yeah, I'll follow it with you. I did follow up with, with VC Walter, and she pointed me to the direction of the, what I thought was the budget that we provided, but I'll follow it with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll continue with the roll call. And Trustee Bonilla? Trustee Bonilla?
I'm sorry. Someone started watching Netflix and knocked me off of mine. I missed it. What happened? I froze.
I just needed your, your vote for 6.1 through 6.7?
Yes. And I missed Trustee Reese's question and the answer to that. Okay.
And Madam Chancellor, I'll just note that the contract ratification report, there was just an oversight to not include the name of the principal in the company so that we can make sure we're not engaging in conflicts of interest. So we just need to know who, whose companies we're voting on.
Good point.
And it just fell off. You, your staff got it on the last one and it fell off on this one. Thank you.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, help me out. Where are we at? 7.1. Okay. So did we vote? Everyone voted?
Yes, we did.
Fantastic. Trustee reports. Let's go to our active dashing Trustee Withrow.
Passed 11:05.
Mm-hmm. Trustee Handy?
Just saying, having a great time working with the David Glover Center, with Merritt College and the Eat Play Learn Group and World Kitchen, serving meals. We're doing 500 meals on, on every Tuesday and Thursday. And just taking meals to everyone, it's surprising how many people are, they don't believe that they're deserving of meals. They think people are worse off than they are. Yet, they're not getting unemployment checks. They're not getting income. And they're very humbled by the opportunity. So we don't ask, we just walk up to their cars, hand them food, ask them how many people are at home, and give them enough. And the blessings that come back to us through the smiles and the gratitude is just amazing. I was feeling very locked in with all of the incidents were happening and, and there were some very serious things happening in Oakland that were fraction groups that were doing things that made us all, put us pretty much all in danger. And I finally decided, I've got to get off this block and go and serve some meals after hearing David speak on here. And it has just been a game changer for me, just to spend all those hours. And our students are there and future students are there. And it's really just an amazing opportunity. There's a saying, you can't beat God's giving no matter how you try. When you give, you're the one who actually gets blessed. So I am having a great time delivering meals to my neighborhood too, because after, after we finish there, we pack up the cars and we take food to senior centers, handing to people on the streets. But also, I have seen, I have neighbors who have had hip replacements and things and can't get out the block. And to be able to bring and distribute those meals is also wonderful. And a woman walked up to me, saw me handing out meals. And I just asked her, I says, oh, would you like some? And she started crying. She said she had not received any unemployment. It was the first time she forced herself to get up and go outside of her house and take a walk because she had a back, a back injury. And then to run into her and to find out and to be able to offer her the services and to give the information, because Ofcure continues to hand out foods. And I see Berkeley City College is doing the same thing. And it's so, it's, it's, it's a little thing, but if you can get out and help anybody, if you can get out and do anything, you'll feel so much better than just staying and feeling hopeless in your house as you're waiting for whatever the next shoe to drop. So I'm grateful for the opportunity. And thank you, David.
Thank you, Trustee Handy. Trustee Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to again thank the Chancellor and her, the team she's pulled together, VC Sada and Mr. Fennell, and the contributors to the plan for the, the security plan. I think it's a great thought.
I think it's a great thought product and it's well, it's well considered and I really appreciate that work. And I also want to thank David Johnson for speaking at the Lifting Up Black Lives Rally and trustee Handy for agreeing to speak on the webinar on Thursday, the trustees webinar. The state, actually, Community College, the statewide system had asked for the African-American caucus to provide a discussion, a dialogue with trustees. So I do hope that everyone will join in on Thursday at noon. One of the the products of the work that that I've been involved in with many others is the resolution that's 6.4, affirming our commitment to student success for African-American students. And again, I think it's important for us to remember that we have to shape our our thoughts and our actions around the students. That has to be our caravan purpose if we're going to bring change. We can reinforce the status quo and continue to follow in policies and practices that allow wealth to be to remain with those who have the opportunities and the access. Or we could try and think another way and work towards equity and work towards putting our students first and actually meeting them where they are. And I hope that we could collectively bring ourselves to do that and make a change through really committing ourselves and reaffirming our commitment to students.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Thank you. This is an incredible time right now in this in the history of the country and with all of that, we lose track of just some of the things that are important that just don't rise to the occasion, but I want to do make make one note, and that is that the state legislature voted to kill Cal-Bright. And that's actually kind of amazing. And and I want to say that in particular because Cal-Bright was promised as this answer to the problems of working class people of color who couldn't get access. And then it just totally bombed and they spent millions and millions and millions of dollars. And what they mostly got was privileged, college-educated, white people disproportionately among the 50 students they managed to get. And so finally killing it made just such good sense. And we'll see whether the governor is going to push back hard, but one of the ways that racism plays out is when people use the language of equity to justify all sorts of other stuff that has nothing to do with serving working class people or people of color. And so, you know, today was a good day and you might not even have noticed it. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee, trustee Gonzalez. Before we, as part of announcements, well, trustee Reese, can you, do you have any announcements other than our next board meeting?
No, but I did just want to say a goodbye to President Karas since this is his last meeting with us, I believe, right? Oh, you have one more. Okay, then I will hold my goodbyes until then, but just know that it is coming. And I have no other announcements, President Bonilla, except for the next board meeting. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, and I'd like to turn it over to trustee Handy.
Tonight, we want to close our meeting in honor of the family of George Floyd and not just him, but all of those that we have lost. As Will Smith said, nothing has changed, it's just being filmed. And what we found now is this one, for whatever reason, this moment in time woke people up to the realities that people of color suffer on a daily basis. As a mother of a black son and being on a group called Mothers of Black Sons, this is this is so real for us. And if the rest of the world could open their eyes and see what is happening, we will all benefit for it. So tonight, we just want to have our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers, not only with the family of Mr. Floyd, but for our own student who was traumatized in Alameda and all the others that we lost, the man who was jogging and the man who was bird watching. We just want to close in their honor and with the thoughts that we can do better, that it will not be in vain. Some people are with us for for a moment, some for a lifetime and some for a purpose. And I think that in this particular day, on this particular heinous event, Mr. Floyd's life was not in vain because he opened the eyes of the world to what was already there if they just wanted to see it. So that I say good night to all of you all.
Yes, yes, beautifully said.
Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn and our next meeting, trustee Reese.
Is on, I'm sorry, I no longer have it in front of me. I believe it is June
23rd.
Thank you, June 23rd, over Zoom. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That adjourns this meeting. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.